Hello everyone, it's good to see you again this morning. We are going to do it again. We are going to tackle a small section of our house that will make a big difference in our ability to function well in our house and just handle the overall, sometimes overwhelming amount of work that it really is. So today's concept that we are talking about is the Island of Sanity, which I've written about before. I've done a YouTube video on it before. I don't know if you've seen that. People are sharing in the chat where their island of sanity is and we will include a little bit of how to choose an island of sanity, but it's not like it's that important. What, like, you're gonna get it wrong. You can iterate as we always do, which is like start with something and then figure out like, oh, actually. So the question is, what space, what horizontal space in your house? If it's clear allows you to get your work done better. And it's like, what horizontal space doesn't? But like, where are you always turning and saying, ah, I wish I had a space here? In our previous house, I had a island and that was my island of sanity. That's where like I evolved this term. It was my island because I decided, you know, even if all of the other counters have stuff on them, as long as the island is clear, I have space to cook, to do something. So instead of saying, I'm gonna clean the whole kitchen, or I'm going to, I need to clear all the counters. I always started with the island. And when something was on the island, I cleaned it. I didn't clean all the counters anytime there was anything on them. And when I set things down, I was like, okay, this just needs to sit here for a while. It was always somewhere other than the island. So the island stayed clear. So that it's like, oh, I've got to start dinner right now. I didn't have to start by cleaning anything because there was counter space available. So that's where I came up with the concept and I found it helpful, not just in having clear space, but in having a clear starting point when I did need to come and clean the kitchen. I start with the island and starting is the hardest part. So starting with the island made it easier to start because I knew where I was going to start. So a lot of people here in the comments are saying that it's their desk, which makes total sense because it's desks are often clutter magnets, but it's where we want to sit and get things done. And that's easier to do if there's space to like bring the books, bring the planner, write something, but the space often just gets piled up. So we are going to tackle an island of sanity. And if you don't like have your go-to spot, just pick a horizontal space that's been bugging you. If there's a horizontal space that just seems to be a clutter magnet and it's bothering you, then choose that today. Because we're gonna spend 20 minutes clearing it and reclaiming a little bit of sanity and proving to ourselves that it doesn't have to take a long time. So we've got the slides again today. We have a timer again today. There's our timer. And just a little reminder of where we're at. And so you don't pick the wrong clutter spot. We're going later in the week. Well, tomorrow, we're gonna do the bedside table. Then we're gonna do an entrance hotspot. So where you, your family comes in and just sets things down. That's our entrance hotspot. And then Friday, the bathroom counters. So yesterday, we did the sink. Today, we're doing our island of sanity and we'll keep going all week long and make some real progress. So how are your sinks today? Um, so yesterday, I, I was finishing up. So the kids do the dishes, but I was double checking the work, the loading of the dishwasher and putting in a few more things, including a cutting board, you know, one of those flexible cutting boards that had bits of meat on it. So we had, I had done beef in the Instant Pot, pulled it out, cut it up on a cutting board. That cutting board was still there, but it had little like flecks and gunk on it. So I didn't just want to put it straight in the dishwasher. So I put it in the sink and I turned the water on and then I grabbed the sprayer, which was a mistake. You know, you just get used to a new place and you know, even things like the sprayers work differently, right? And that because the sink is shallower and because, so previously I had one of those where the faucet itself pulls out and is a sprayer and it, it doesn't have the same pressure. The pressure in the faucet here is, the water pressure is incredible. And so the direction's different. So anyway, I pulled the sprayer out and turned it on and it just blew the little beef bit gunky stuff on the cutting board all over. And I know that in previous, previous years, I would have seen that and said, of course, I just shined, I just cleaned the sink today. Of course, this happened and just sprayed beef gunk on the wall, on the space behind the sink, on the counters around the sink and all over the sink. But instead, this time I thought, oh, well, I just cleaned all of this. So this is gonna be no problem to wipe down while it's wet. Like instead of letting it sit here and become gunk like it was this morning, I put the cutting board in the dishwasher, grabbed, you know, an old cut-up t-shirt rag and just wiped it all down real quick. And it was back to the way it was that morning, like without that internal drama. And that's the kind of change that we want to see is, is cutting out that like, whoa, is me, I cleaned it and now it's not clean anymore. It's like, I cleaned it. So now it's gonna be super fast and easy to clean again as it gets dirty, because that's what happens in places that clean things. The places that make things clean get dirty and need to be cleaned. This is just the way it works. And so we're gonna expect it and not fight it. Okay, so I would love to hear in the chat too, if you experienced something similar yet. Maybe you will later this week and can share. So what you need to get started today is a supply of rags, your all-purpose cleaner of choice, whatever kind of cleaner you need for the space that you picked, a container for your random stuff collection, and probably today, you're definitely gonna need that one, and a timer, or you can just let me be your timer today. And of course, you can get the checklist for today. You can see that here. So there is a checklist that also includes maintenance, keeping up with that sink area. And there is a checklist for every day and you can see where the maintenance habit builds over the week also. So this can be a fun little checklist. You can get that by sharing this workshop with a friend. You can share a YouTube link. You can share the URL here. Use the share buttons, use the green button below, forward, an email that you got to a friend. However, you do, just after you do that, email support@simplifiedorganization.com and my assistant will get you that printable checklist set. Okay. So I think that yesterday, we discovered that coworking really does work and that was fun. At the end of our session last time, some of the comments that we had in the chat were from Be Free. She said, my older daughter saw me working like crazy and did the same with her list of jobs. That's a big win. Bobby Sue said that it was very productive and fun. Betsy was there at the session and then said she was going to use the replay again this evening to work on her closet while the kids are in the tub. And Lori said, it was great and it was super helpful to have real-time motivation. So that was fun to see and I hope that we have the same today. So in this rental house that we're in right now, I don't have a kitchen island. It's a really small galley kitchen, which is my least favorite kind of kitchen, but here we are. It does have lifesaver pull-out cutting boards though, which is like my instant countertop, just pull-out emergency countertop. And so I said, you know what? That's actually my island of sanity right now because it's giving me a little bit of extra sanity to be able to whip out that extra counter space. So here on the side, because this was a three photo slide template. This is a stock photo of island, a beautiful island that looks, you know, pristine. And sometimes this is the image that we have of, oh, you know, a real kitchen island of sanity is this beautiful white, spotless kind of thing with the lights shining on it just so, you know. La. And as you can tell, if you look a little bit more closely, this photo is from a house that is empty. It's, it's not moved in at all. They're not even pretending anyone lives here. You can see the spot here where there's, there should be a fridge and there's no fridge. And there are glass doors here and absolutely nothing in the counters. So the counter spaces here are entirely empty, but actually everything in this house is entirely empty. And that's not our goal. Our goal is not to make our house look like no one lives there. That's not the standard. The standard is, can we use our kitchen to do our work well? And that is the contrast here. We have the stock photo, you know, magazine shot sort of thing where no one actually lives there. And then the real life. My, my real life rental kitchen, tiny rental kitchen right now. You can see my bag, bulk bag of quick oats in the background there because there's no place for a 25-pound bag of quick oats except right there. But we need the 25-pound bag of quick oats to feed people. So there it is. So anyway, I use these pull-out cutting boards. Oh, you know what? I'm gonna, before I start talking, I'm going to start the timer so that we, so take your before. I hope that you've picked your island of sanity now. Take your before photo because it really does help and I loved getting some before and after shots in the email of your kitchen sinks yesterday. So now choose your island of sanity, get your before photo, and now I'm gonna start the timer. Here we go. Okay, so and then back to my, my little spot here. Here we go. So, you know, I whip these pull-out cutting boards out as my extra counter space all the time. So they're used as cutting boards, but they're also just used as emergency counter space. And I generally use the little plastic cutting board covers, or they're just plastic, really thin, flexible cutting boards when I cut things on them. So theoretically, they would stay clean because again, rental. But that's not what always happens as, as is evident. And then as long as they are clear, you can just push them back in and forget about their actual state. So these were actually closed and this is what they look like when I pulled it out. So even like standing crumbs on them. It'd just been shoved in and then when you pull it back out, those crumbs didn't go anywhere. Like there's enough room above the cutting boards in that little spot, I guess, for the crumbs to stay there. So I said, okay, we need, I need to just actually pull these all the way out and scrub them down. But I knew that that wasn't gonna take the whole time because it actually just took five minutes. So I also picked a little spot in our house. So this is across from our dining room table. Just a little square Ikea oddvar shelf, has some board games. And the top of this thing is where everyone puts stuff. If I say, clear the table, apparently that means put the things on this little spot, which is not actually what I ever intended to mean. Like this, the spot's supposed to be clear. The dictionary belongs here and that's the only thing that belongs here. So I said, okay, well, this is my clutter magnet spot that I'm gonna address as my little horizontal space of sanity as well. Okay, so the first step as you approach your island of sanity is to just throw away garbage. So it's, it's not like a systematic start at one end and deal with each thing on it. But do what's fast and easy first to start your momentum. So as you stare at it, it's like, okay, is there garbage here? Pick out the garbage and just throw it away because that's an easy decision that makes a big difference very quickly, assuming that there's garbage. I don't know, there's always garbage. Whenever I go to clear a horizontal space, there's always used Kleenex or junk mail or something that I can throw away. And that, that when those things that you can just throw away, you don't have to make a decision about them. They just go straight in the trash can. They're gonna leave the house. It's a big win right off the bat. So start by throwing away garbage. Then you put away the things that are quick and easy to tidy. So in my space, in my space here, the books there all have a real home that is not, it's like two or three steps from where I'm standing here. So it didn't take a lot of, you know, I didn't get a lot of steps clearing this space. And it wouldn't have been that hard to put the things in the right place originally, but I just went and put them away on the shelves or in the bins that they belonged in. And the sunscreen goes in a bucket that's just right in the closet. That's right over here out of the, out of the shop. The sunglasses, there's a little, our, my entrance hotspots over here and that's actually where the sunglasses belong. This is pre-garbage. So this is the Sunday bulletin that just went in the garbage. You know, it really actually took about three minutes to clear the things here, except for these little, like this is a toy here and these are some sewing things. And so that was not quite so quick and easy because those are not my items and I don't know where they belong. So that's the next step. Gather the things you don't know about, or that you do need to make decisions about and put those in a container. So this is deal with later because we want to keep our focus on this spot. And you know, if I went and said, okay, I'm going to find out where, which daughter these scissors belong to, because I'm not even sure which one was using these and which sewing project this should belong, like that's just too much. And I'm not actually gonna figure that out. I'm going to make my daughters figure that out. So I just put it in the container, set it on the dining room table and we'll deal with that later. So the container, it might feel like you're just procrastinating or putting off work and you kind of are, but that's because you don't want to get sidetracked. We don't want to go into our kids' bedrooms to put things away or figure out where things go because that's just gonna open up a whole nother can of worms that we really don't want to do right now. We just want to focus on our island of sanity and make progress here in this spot. So the junk that you can't put away quickly and easily just goes in the container for now. And then you say, okay, what's left? Is there, did I unearth another layer of garbage? Are there other things now I see that I can put away quickly or stick it all in the container? Right now, what you want to do is actually take everything off, even the things that belong there and get it totally clear, even if that just means putting some things on the ground or on another nearby horizontal space so that you can wipe it out, wipe it down. It's fast and easy to clean something that is empty. So just move all the stuff off of it, wipe it down. So that was what was handy about my little spot here is, look, there were already rags right there. So like, okay, I'm using one of these. I'm not even moving. I'm just gonna, so right behind, as I stand here, right behind me is the dining room table. And so the things that did belong there or that I was going to take care of later, just went on the dining room table and I wiped it down. It was quite a layer of dust there. So that was good to get that wiped down. And you know, with that such a small space right there, it actually took maybe three minutes. And I think that's a good, and I can see already in the chat that some of you are already finishing clearing off your little horizontal spots. And I think that's a great lesson for us to just stop and realize and think about that these jobs that we, you know, we look at the clutter pile, you know, as we walk by and just keep going, ugh. Oh man, why? I'm gonna have to deal with that later. But then when we actually do come to deal with it, it didn't take that long. If we like actually just thought about how much time it actually takes, it doesn't take that long to just do it. If we're, if we just get it done, rather than think about how much time we think it will take to do the whole thing, you know, when we think about the whole job, it feels big and it might even take longer because work does expand to fill the time allotted. So if we just allot a short amount of time and go at it, we find it often takes an even shorter amount of time than we were giving it because we are just doing one thing and not getting distracted. Rachel says in the chat that hers is already done and she thought it would take forever, but it didn't. All right, so you know, make sure to wipe down the horizontal surface. You know, take this opportunity of the clear space to make it clean while we're at it. There, there's always the layer of dust, right? So it might not be a magazine, empty house spread here, but I just pulled those cutting boards straight out. They do come all the way out and put them in the sink and used our little dish scrubby to scrub them down. The dish scrubby has kind of a rubber nub on the back that you can kind of turn over and use to scrape crust off. And so I did that and yeah, like less than two minutes each. And then since they were wet and there would, I did just leave them out. So I put them back in just like this and they were a little bit wet. And I just left them open to air out. And, and that was that. And they look so much better. Let's just do a little, a little before and after here. So from this to this in like four minutes. Yes, Yvonne says, the baseboards were quick. Why did I think this was a project? And now my dresser is well on the way also. That is awesome. So as you finish up, if you look at that, people, it's only been half the time too. Well, I've, according to my little live thing, I have been talking for 24 minutes, but we still have eight minutes left. So what I would recommend is still taking that before and after photo because it helps, doesn't it? To just, you know, it was really fun when I, so I just duplicated this slide with my before photo and moved it over here and replaced the photo in the slide with the clean ones. And it was like, ta-da. And, and we need some of those ta-da moments because we do tend to just move on to the next thing quickly. And we don't stop and recognize like, hey, I made it go from this to this and that's great. Like I appreciate that. I'm noticing, I like it this way. And that was good work. It was a good job. Even if it was only four minutes and not, you know, we start saying, well, it's not really that big of a deal. I should have done that sooner. Now I have time to do something else. And we just like deflect the recognition of what we did accomplish. And so we end the day saying, well, I didn't do anything today. Which at one point, my husband called me out on and said, um, stop lying. I was like, oh. Oh, yeah, right, okay. I didn't do all that I wanted to get done, but like, when, when do we ever do that, right? Getting all that we would like to get done in a day. We don't have to do all that was on our list in order to say, I did something. You know, it's, that's our all or nothing mentality dragging us down and not, but when we notice and say, hey, in four minutes, I can take my island of sanity, my little space that makes my kitchen work for me and take it from kind of embarrassing to nice and clean in four minutes or less. If that's true and I noticed that and appreciate that and am grateful for that, what else can I do in four minutes? And it switches your thinking from looking at your whole list or seeing some kind of idealized end result that you think you're working for that never happens and which drags you down and makes you like not even want to try to say, oh, well, what else could I do in four minutes? That made a difference in my actual real-life kitchen and real-life use. And you know, real life in, once real life gets added to this kitchen, it's not gonna look like this. Look at all that white, like that's gonna be a problem if real life was, was living, being lived in that kitchen. So that before and after picture really does make a difference. And then when you have that after, you know, you can also look at it and say, okay, what should this space have? So the dictionary belongs here. And I do like that because it means that there's always, if it's clear, like, look, there's space. I can say, hey, go look it up in the dictionary. And they can just open it up right there. The dictionary, they don't have to carry this dictionary around because it's heavy and I would like it to stay nice. But so I like this spot. It's a little dictionary home. And so I moved a house plant over here to kind of indicate like, look, this is a little oasis, a little oasis of sanity. I don't think it's gonna make people stop putting things there, but it's a nice thought. And it at least reminds me. And maybe now, you know, people set one thing down. I, I'm the one who likes, it's my sanity here. Everybody else doesn't have to walk on eggshells for my sanity. So if those sunglasses land here again, I can say, oh, those just go right over here. It's really quick. I'm gonna move them. Instead of getting all upset that someone put their sunglasses on my island of sanity, I can be responsible for my own sanity and put them where they belong quickly and easily and not make it into a big deal. I can be responsible for my own sanity and put them where they belong quickly and easily and not make it into a big deal. It's fun to see the different things that you are finding. Yes. So you know, the final step then, I guess this step goes before taking. We have our, our after photo. There's one after photo. Here's another. And, um, and it does help to see. The before and the after, and maybe you can even put them right next to each other or help your kids. This is a great. The before and after photo is a great strategy for kids. Like if you have to e-hap the living room. Tell them, you know, I'm going to give you 15 minutes to clean your room. Here's the before, I'm taking a before picture right now. In 15 minutes, I'm going to take another picture. And let's see what difference you can make. And maybe take the after picture after taking everything out from under the bed. Cause that's a quick way to make a difference is just to, to hide things. But that's not actual progress, you know, so there's always that. So if you would like the. Checklist for this whole week. To work along with this series either live or with the replays, we have this as a printable PDF. That you can get. In exchange for sharing this workshop with someone else who you think might like it. And, um, all you have to do is share it however you share with your friends, email, text, Facebook, Instagram. Maybe even if you post your before and after photos on Instagram. You can then email support at simplified organization.com and ask for that. Uh, workshop. I'm not on Instagram. Anymore, but I still have my username. So you can tag me and people can click that as a link to. Get over to my website. But. Yes. Jen says, where do you find the line between just taking care of things and training small people to be considerate of those with whom they live? Uh, that is a great question and I think it starts with us thinking about whether or not we're being considerate. Because interrupting and calling them to take care of things just because it. Has become an irritant to me isn't. Considerate, like it's not actually the way that I want our family atmosphere to be, but that's my like, as soon as it bugs me. That's, that's my cue for making other people take care of it. If it doesn't bother me, I don't call them. And if it does bug me, then I call them. Like if it bugs me, if like, if I have that irritation start to build or frustration. To me, that's my cue that I have to deal with it because irritation and frustration is my problem. And then we build into our day. Times where we clear things. Cause you know, if, if I'm working in the kitchen or if I've got a lot of things going, I leave things out. There you go. There's your 20 minute timer. Horizontal space is for working. You know, yesterday my daughter was water coloring and so half the table had wet paintings on them. And yeah, that was taking up space on the table, but what else? Like they do have to dry. We do not have very much horizontal space. It was a great way to spend her summer break yesterday. It was a great activity. I guess it's just going to take up space and it needs to not bug me. It just needs, when it is dry or you know, before dinner, afternoon or. When it, then she can take care of it. Just like if I am, have made something and I'm leaving things out to cool. Or I'm leaving the dishes to take care of after the meal. You know, as we work, we're all, you know, we do often say, well, I'm going to do this. And then later I'm going to come back and clean it up. And that's okay for the kids too, as long as there are those times for coming back. And then, you know, mottos like. Don't put it down, put it away. Like sometimes if I'm, if I'm seeing them just randomly. Start mindlessly setting things in the wrong spot. It's like, oh. Try to catch him right there, just like I try to catch myself, right? Cause I think that's one thing. That has helped me is just recognizing it's not the kid problem. This is just a people problem. We all have the same problem. And if I haven't solved it for myself, I'm not really expecting to one, solve it in my. Children's childhoods, like I'm going to continue having this problem, but I'm, I'm going to make sure they don't have the problem that I have. But we're going to work together to, so to build up that conscience together that just says, oh, put it away. Don't put it down. That, that mom voice someday will come back to haunt them or even ourselves. We will hear it in our heads as we set something down. Yay, Yvonne says the dresser is done, except for one basket full of stuff to sort. Yep, Susan, that's why we say repent, rejoice, repeat. We all have our own problems and it's easy to blame them on other people and say, if other people fix to their problems, I wouldn't have a problem. But that's not the way it actually goes is it? It's actually our own problem, our own attitude problem. That we can repent of before God. And then move on with forgiveness, which brings rejoicing and progress. As we work with gratitude where we are. With the responsibilities we've been given. With joy. So this was fun today. I hope that you saw some real progress. And again, I would love to see before and after. Pictures. Oops, I don't know what's happening there. All right. Rebecca's desk is clean. There's just a small box to deal with later. And the old, your older son is repairing the desk. So, so the drawer no longer falls out. That's a big win. All right. So this was a great project today and I hope you come back tomorrow. For bedside table, which could be bedside, could be your actual like bedside table, could be a dresser top. I don't know, mine might actually be my desk because my. My bedside table is not bad. It, it could be dusted for sure, but. My desk right across from my bed right here could definitely. Use some attention. So this was a lot of fun and I hope to see you tomorrow and the replays will be available on YouTube. So see you later.